Sure, please, it's yours. Yes, so. Say. Yes, it's very dangerous. Sounds nothing. We seem expected. Yeah, he was young. Not yet sixteen. I do that, I do that thing. Just want to wait. There you go. It's that you know, it's probably out. Raised to the. Setting. Set up a little something now. Sticky desk. I am in the five hours. I think I said. I believe. This is. Yeah, I feel. Truth I think. You were a little. But that, that would be. She. He can't say that. April Chaplin, such a. Let it true. He's true. Oh, so. Ah, it was you. My stuff was so, so big. And it was all there. All my friends were there. They were.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I don't know. But I didn't. I think. When you leave this house and I'm out. It's the easiest. I went. I didn't think about it. Which we. Because I'm too. What it's all. That way it would give you those. It's great. So. Then. Like. If we know. But back in the house and you know, I said. Wouldn't it be so? And I got rid of the bottom spell. Two more. And. And everything. Seeing your. I just have some. On the side. That's about you. So. You. Which you.
I suppose.
So. They'll. Here you look.
Well, I've got 5:45, so I think we'll go ahead and get started. Only talked to the mayor a couple of times over the weekend, so I think she's a little nervous. Guys, all be on your best behavior tonight, so let's, let's get our business done. Anyways, call to order will be the first thing, then roll call, I guess prayer, then a pledge. Call to order. Roll call, adoption of the agenda, miscellaneous agenda items. Got the updates, salute to America. The National Pet Rescue Day proclamation. Not sure if anyone will be here. Captain Wildy, will you be able to receive the proclamation if no one else shows up? And then Michelle Brooks and Nancy Thompson on a recently published book. Welcome. Public carings, we only have one, it's on Bill 2022-005. Mr. Sanders, you're going to speak on that?
Yes, sir, it's the PUD rezoning for the 101 Jackson Street Transformational Housing, and also approval of a preliminary plat. We've had no additional comments except the one I mentioned at the last council meeting. Glad to answer any questions.
All right. That takes us to appointments by the mayor. They went through the admin committee. So it's just an action. Johnson Wiseman, do you have any other comments?
Excuse me, sir.
Yes?
I'd like to point out that one of the. Members, existing members that's being reappointed, Dale Vaughn, that needs to be approved by a super majority.
Okay.
Mr. Moulman, is that correct? Or? Okay.
Yeah, there's a number of them on there. I'll point that out when we go through the announce, or through the actual appointment.
Okay, I'm sorry, so you're going to talk about that piece? Okay, yeah, there's, there's a few of them with asterisks. Then presentations from staff consultants and invited guests. Announcements by the mayor, I don't have any on her behalf, but we'll go through the committees and if there's anything else that we need to announce. Presentation from the gallery, if we have any, anyone signed up. Consent agenda, two items on there. Any discussion on consent agenda? Need a motion to approve that, then at the appropriate time. Bills introduced, 2022-007, Mr. Marash?
Yes, uh, just basically, this is a vacating, an unimproved alleyway off of Main Street, 1600 block. It was part of the original plat in the early 1900s, never, it was never constructed, so no problem vacating it.
All right, and we have 2022-008, Ms. Strope?
Thank you, yeah, this is a ordinance to add Juneteenth as a recognized holiday for city employees. This went through the administration committee.
Comment?
Uh, yeah, I think, I think I'll, I'll propose an amendment to, on the funding of that.
Okay. So we'll recognize you at that time. And we have 2022-009, it's Mr. Kroll.
This is introduction of a bill to authorize 5% salary increase for all employees except for police members of the FOP and city administrator.
All right, and then you also have -010. The labor agreement.
This is a labor agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police, and I think representatives are going to be here to kind of walk through a little of the structure which we discussed with you previously.
All right, then we'll go to bills pending. 2022-004. Chief Schofield.
This is an automatic aid agreement. For neighboring jurisdictions that would formalize time of dispatch responses, not only for us going out, but also them coming in. And I can, happy to give a little more information here or during the meeting. At your pleasure.
Everybody comfortable during the meeting? Or do you have questions now, comments?
We'll have a, just a brief discussion about the comprehensive nature of this agreement. Also the scope of it, it's just going to be one, one unit in both directions, one company. And then that it doesn't preclude traditional mutual aid as we know it. Happy to talk to whatever degree with the council wishes.
Okay. We'll get into that deeper, I don't know if the chairman will have any comments that time, but we'll get into it at that point. And then -005, we would, will have taken up under 5A, so that takes us to 2022-006. Mr. Sanders, Campo?
Thank you. Uh, this is a contract with Crafton Toll for a active transportation consulting project to update several plans. The Campo Transportation, Active Transportation Plan is, is what the, hopefully, end result will be called, but it would be replacing or augmenting the Parks Greenway Plan, the City Sidewalk Plan, and also the, uh, the existing Campo Pedestrian Plan. It is 80% federally funded, and the match is being provided by the Parks and Recreation Department. Be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions at this time? All right, that takes us the informal calendar, 2022-003. It's in regards to an engineering design contract on the Ohio Street Bridge. We talked about that extensively at the Public Works Committee. My intention is to leave it on the informal calendar, and we probably will not pursue that project unless there's some push from council to do that, so. The intent tonight is to leave it on the informal calendar. Probably have another discussion about it in June. I mean, I've had a couple inquiries, but it would not be coming back to a construction contract. There's been some discussion about could it be a pedestrian, and what would we need to do to? Yeah, I realize it's already a pedestrian, but if there's anything we're going to need to do to beef it up a little bit. Takes us to 14 resolutions, resolution -04. Captain, Willie?
Yes, thank you, this resolution would authorize the Jefferson City Police Department to apply for the Bureau of Justice Assistance Body-Worn Camera Policy and Implementation Program. If awarded that grant, we could receive up to $2,000 per body worn camera. There is a 50% match to that grant, however, that would be just a, an additional investment with the rest of the program applied toward that, and we have plenty of other expenses, so this would allow us to receive that grant if we could proceed with applying for it.
Great. Any comments? Resolution -05, back to you, Ms. Strope.
Thank you, this is a resolution authorizing a contract with Gallagher Benefit Services for employee benefit broker services.
All right, and then finally -06. Mr. Melman?
Thank you, this resolution would provide a support of the city council for the Cole County Commission's application on behalf of the nonprofit soccer entity that's pursuing a soccer complex. The, the application is to the Missouri Development Finance Board for inclusion in the board's tax credit for contribution program. This is a, essentially a letter of support and doesn't involve any fiscal commitments on behalf of the city.
Everybody good? Out of 15 presentations from the gallery, if there are any, 16 council staff discussion, 17 new business, 18 approval of closed session minutes, they should have been circulated around. Out of 19 unfinished business, and then to Councilwoman Wiseman. Or Jeremy. Any other comments before we go in? We've got a few minutes, so. Be back six o'clock.
What did that was? Well. I know.
All right, well, we've got six o'clock, so we'll go ahead and get started. If everyone will stand, we'll do the prayer and then follow that with the Pledge of Allegiance. Dear only Father, thank you for this opportunity to get together once again to do the business of, of our city. We appreciate all that you do for us. Thank you for this beautiful weather, the rain last week, and just all the families represented here tonight, trying to do what's right for our community. We pray especially for communities Buffalo and Texas, California that had very tragic situations. We thank you for the law enforcement there that shut down those, those opportunities very quickly. Even though their families hurting, families with lost members, it could have been worse in all the situations, and we just thank them for the work that they did. Thank our other public safety around town, I know it was a busy weekend. We've also had some celebrations statewide and in our city. Just thank you once again for our public safety personnel that keep us safe, give us the opportunity to meet together and transact the business. Thank you for the legislature, they gavelled down last week, but I think Jefferson City came through that process very successfully, and we thank you for what's going on. We thank you for our men and women scattered around the country and around the world in the military service. Especially pray for, personally for my nephew, Navy pilot in Japan doing his responsibilities, just representing millions of other young individuals, giving of themselves to keep us, again, with an opportunity to meet tonight. Thank you for all that you do for us, we pray in your name, amen.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, and again, thanks for being here for our guests and for council. We'll turn it to Mrs. Donaldson, if you will read the roll, go ahead and call the meeting to order.
Deacon?
Here.
Fitzwater?
Present.
Hensley?
Present.
Kimna?
Here.
Lester?
Here.
Schreiber? Spencer?
Here.
Spicer?
Present.
Ward? Here. Wiseman? Present.
We have an agenda, so we will proceed on item number three, adoption of the agenda you have in front of you.
I move to adopt the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion of second, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you very much. Miscellaneous agenda items. Annie Smith to provide us an update on salute to America. Hello, you want to come up to the microphone and? We appreciate you.
Um, just wanted to update everybody on the Salute to America event. It will be happening July 3rd and 4th. We decided to go back to the day and a half instead of the three day thing. It was a little overwhelming. I'm very excited this year, we have a new carnival coming in. There's supposed to be a quicker setup and tear down carnival, so hopefully not interfering with downtown too awful much over there. And we have still the stage entertainment, Madison Beer Garden and Capitol Main Stage, we're excited to be still at the Capitol, it's so wonderful. I did want to let you guys know that we unfortunately lost our second largest sponsor this last week, and we are looking now for a new stage sponsor for the Capitol Main Stage, so if anybody knows of somebody interested, let us know, just reach out. Our website is salutetoamerica.org, you can always just go to the website, contact me that way, and, and I'd be happy to help out. Does anybody have any questions about the event?
Any questions, comments?
So, because funding has been fun this year, we're going to do a couple of tribute acts instead. So we've got Hank Williams Revisited, and we have, um, the Cougar Project, which sounds wrong, it's not, it's John Cougar Tribute, and the, I'm going to draw a blank, Steve Miller Project, so. Couple of tribute acts this year. Hopefully next year we'll have more funding and be able to do a little bit more, but we're still trying to recuperate from the whole pandemic and everything as well, like everybody else.
We're, we're sort of between projects, but I, I appreciate all the other acts that signed up, thank you though.
All right. Any other comments? Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
That'll move us to item B, National Pet Rescue Day Proclamation. Captain Willie, I guess you, you're the person. I don't know if you had any comments to make on it, if not, I can read the, the proclamation, but you had it.
Well, I did not have any prepared comments, but I will say this on behalf of the Jeff City Animal Shelters, that we're always very happy when we have people from our community come in and, and claim those pets that fall into our custody, and this is a very welcoming community, they love their pets, and anytime someone can come in, pick up a pet, and we can put them into a loving home, it's a rewarding day for us, so I gladly accept the proclamation, and I appreciate everybody that supports the animal shelter by doing so.
Great, well, the mayor and I'm sure staff, a lot of input from staff, put together a very nice proclamation, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but just a couple of the whereas is, whereas Jefferson City and surrounding area residents responded to our request for fostering animals in their time of need, which directly resulted in animals being able to be adopted at the animal shelter, and whereas individuals' contribution of love, kindness, socialization, and care provided by staff, fosters, and volunteers to our animals helped them to be prepared for a new beginning with their new families. Now therefore, I carry turge and mayor of the city of Jefferson do proclaim, May 20, 2022, as Pet Rescue Day in the city of Jefferson, Missouri, and we thank staff and fosters for their volunteers and the help they provide to animals in our community, and she did want me to extend thanks to all that are involved, so I think.
And to all those foster parents, I know that's an incredible amount of effort that they take on to do so, and can't say enough about those volunteers, so it's a team effort, but we've got a very pet friendly and pet safe community, and we'll continue to do so in the future, but thank you.
And staff has done, has done a great job. In honor of the mayor, I don't do selfies, but we are going to take a picture so we can post it, and she'll see that I actually gave it. I have council, if we can figure out how to. Thank you, the mayor gets her exercise, that's nice. All right, next item, Michelle Brooks and Nancy Thompson going to talk to us, present their recently published book, Buried Jefferson City History. I believe I heard you at Rotary. It was an exciting presentation, thank you, thanks for coming to council.
Good evening, I'm Nancy Thompson, and as you know, this is Michelle Brooks. May is Historic Preservation Month, and in keeping with that, Michelle and I are here to draw your attention to a significant and frequently forgotten piece of local history owned by the city of Jefferson. When the city was platted in 1823, five acres of land just outside the city limits was set aside as a public burial ground and named City Cemetery. In 1838, the adjacent five acres became a private cemetery called Woodland Cemetery. Eventually, the two were joined and are now known as Woodland Old City Cemetery. It is the oldest known cemetery in Jefferson City and Cole County, and among the oldest in the state of Missouri. It is maintained entirely by the city of Jefferson. Michelle and I have just released a book, Buried Jefferson City History, offering insight into this historic piece of property and spotlighting some of the people buried there. Books are available from downtown Toyin Book or from Michelle or me, and we have dedicated a portion of the proceeds from book sales toward engraving additional names on the gone but not forgotten memorial in Woodland Old City Cemetery.
Behind the stone wall topped with a wrought iron fence along East McCarty are thousands of stories about buried Jefferson City history. Among the earliest burials are elected officials who died while in office and were buried in the designated state lot rather than being transported home for burial. They include 15 legislators, an auditor of public accounts, a clerk of the Supreme Court, a state senator, a state treasurer, plus a lone Democrat committeeman interred there because of his wife's insistence. The tombstones of governors. The tombstones of Governors Thomas Reynolds and John Sappington Marmaduke stand tall above the rest. The most visually striking feature of the cemetery is the Clark Family Mausoleum, where Joseph and Lavinia rest with their son, Junius. Joseph Clark donated Bragg Hall, which served as city hall for nearly seven decades. A life-size bronze statue of him and portraits of his wife and two sons hang at the Clark Senior Nutrition Center today. Jefferson City's first mayor, Thomas Lawson Price, was originally buried here, but later moved to Riverview Cemetery when Woodland Old City Cemetery lapsed into disrepair. At least 14 additional city mayors are interred here, including Sylvester W. Cox, whose grave is unmarked. Buried here are veterans representing every conflict from the Revolutionary War to World War II. Identified among these are 13 U.S. colored troops who fought in the Civil War and donated their mustering out pay toward the founding of Lincoln University. Distinguished faculty members, Jamison Rutledge and Dr. John Dammel, are also interred in the section along Locust Street. Woodland Old City Cemetery was placed on the National Register of Historic Places in 2018 because it reflects the demographics of Jefferson City as it was being developed. Many of these first settlers built the buildings and established the community, businesses, and schools. The lives of the people interred here are intertwined with the birth and development of this city as well as the state of Missouri. Thank you. You have any questions or comments?
Questions, comments? Councilman Spencer.
Where could we, if the public would like, community would like to make a donation, where could that take place?
Donation?
Yeah, for?
Probably Dave Grellner.
Okay.
The Cemetery Resources Board, I think, is planning a walking tour of the cemetery in the fall sometime. They've been unable to meet because of COVID circumstances, but I know that they are planning to do some repairs out there.
You have an idea of cost on an average marker?
Well, I don't know what the cost is now of getting a name engraved. We're putting, we're engraving names on the Gone But Not Forgotten Memorial that was established out there several years ago. We have purchased small markers for unmarked graves when we know where someone is buried, and I think Capitol City Monument has given us a favorable pricing on there, somewhere between $85 and $100 apiece.
Thank you.
Councilman Deacon.
What about the vandalism? I know in years past, the cemetery was really in disarray, and then it was put back together. Is there still a problem with vandalism?
Again, you could probably ask Dave Grellner that. I'm not on the board any longer, but yes, there is always a problem with vandalism, and there's always a problem with damage due to mowing or pranksters getting in there, and stones that are down, they pick them up and carry them about the cemetery. I was out there the other day, and some had been moved quite a distance, just a heap of broken tombstones. A one stone that is broken in several pieces and had been picked up and moved several yards away, so that, I think, is an ongoing problem, something you're always going to have. But it surely, it surely is, it's being better cared for than it was around 1900.
Councilman Schreiber.
There has been problems with some vandalism, but not near as much as there used to be, and a lot of the, a lot of the damage there is caused by weather conditions because of the old limestone. But to the two authors here, Michelle and Nancy, they both worked very diligently over the years, not just on this book, but in helping to see that the cemetery was repaired. And when Nancy served as the chairperson of the City Cemetery Committee, she did a great job in actually locating individuals whose markers were lost, you know, and years ago, they were just stacked up along the edge by the quarry down there, and a lot of those recovered. So Nancy has worked diligently for many years on that particular project, and Michelle going way back as well, back when she was with the newspaper, she did a lot of things to help us with a couple of tours that we had out there, including the first one where money was raised for the fence that went around it. So it is a definite historic treasure for the city of Jefferson, and I want to personally thank both of you for your efforts. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Any other comments? Thank you very much. Appreciate you being here. Item five, public hearings, hearing on pending bill 2022-005. Ms. Donaldson, you want to read?
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, changing, amending, and modifying the zoning map of the zoning code of the City of Jefferson by rezoning .2 acres of land addressed as 101 Jackson Street and 504 East State Street from MU1 mixed-use to PUD planned unit development and approving a preliminary PUD plan.
Mr. Sanders.
Thank you. Slide coming, well, as the clerk indicated, this is a rezoning and preliminary plat recommendation coming from the Planning and Zoning Commission for 101 Jackson Street, which is at the intersection of State Street and Jackson, and one of the properties is actually behind the Jackson Street property at 504 East State Street. Go here. The first item is basically a rezoning. The purpose of the rezoning is to be able to increase the maximum number of units at 101 Jackson from four, which is permitted under the mixed-use zoning, which it currently has. PUD would allow it to have a fifth unit. This fifth unit would have window access and door access, it would actually be in the bottom of the apartment complex, and I believe one unit will also be an accessible unit, which is a benefit. The other item with the PUD is a, is the actual preliminary plan, and that includes, they're not really changing the building, except they're going to go from four units to a fifth unit, but they're also on the lot behind it, they're going to be putting in parking. I believe the parking requirement is 10, and their parking lot can accommodate, I believe, up to 10 units, which well exceeds the parking requirements for this PUD plan. The overlying Conservation District, which is what we refer to as Capitol Overlay District, that is going to still be in place, still govern the look and feel, the historic nature of the building, so it will fit into the character of the neighborhood. The, let's see who real quick. Also downstairs in the basement, there will be a common area, which may have a washer and dryer, some storage space for the tenants. There will also be a barbecue grill for the tenants to use. There is a new sewer connection being planned that would come to the back of the property along the right-of-way, so connect into the sewer system. And besides that, there was a comment from a neighbor who was basically inquisitive about what was going to happen with the property. Staff explained it to her, and she is supportive of the project. With that, I'd like to mention the property owner and applicant and their consultant is here, and I'd be glad to answer any questions myself.
Great. Any questions before we get into the applicant? All right. Also, any member of the public that has, wants to make any comment on this project? You said the applicant was here, does someone want to come up and speak? I know you're familiar to this room, but if you could just identify yourself again, recognize the guy following you.
My name is John Blosser, I'm board president for Transformational Housing. Is that better? And as many of you know, this is the second property that we've undertaken. Already completed our work on 203 Cherry Street. We plan on doing basically the same thing with this house. Larry Burkhardt is our engineer and architect, and so if you had any technical questions, he'll answer those. But our main focus here was, we wanted to, we hated the waste of space. Jeff City needs low-income housing, and, you know, that basement will provide an additional two bedrooms, so.
Great. Burkhardt, did you want to make any comments?
We are kind of sensitive to the nature of the neighborhood. We'll try to restore the building as much as possible to its historic condition, except for the rear, they took off the rear exitway, so we'll have to put some stairs back there. So we will alter the, well, the east end of it right now, because there are exits, and since Ascofield's here, we're going to put sprinklers in it, so.
That brought a smile.
It is an exciting project to be involved with and trying to restore that, so.
Excellent. Any comments, questions? Thank you very much. Anybody to speak in opposition to? We'll go ahead and close the public hearing then. You have pending bill before you. Yes.
Deacon. Fitzwater.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Spencer.
Aye.
Spicer.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Excellent.
Congratulations. Item six, appointments by the mayor, I believe Ms. Stroke, you going to run through that real quick?
Yes, thank you. We do have quite a few appointments and reappointments this evening. The first new appointment is to the Environmental Quality Commission, and that's Mackenzie Walker, to the historian Christine Boston. We have seven reappointments to the Jefferson City Industrial Development Authority, that's Dan Westhues, Bob Gilbert, Bernie Fectal, Larry Vincent, Beth Uttrick, Diane Gillespie, and Hank Voight. To the Parks and Recreation Commission, we have three reappointments, Andre Grunston, Alicia Edwards, and Stu Murphy. To the Planning and Zoning Commission, we have some reappointments, Greg Butler, Blake Marcus, Dale Vaughn. Recommendation to move Spencer Hoegfeld from an alternate position to a regular position, and then reappoint Trika Young to her current alternate position, and the new appointments, Hank Voight and Jacob Robinett to alternate positions. And I'd also like to just point out, as mentioned in the pre-meeting, there are a number of names listed with asterisks next to them, and those will require a two-thirds majority vote of the council because they are a third appointment.
Excellent. Any questions or comments? We are going to need a motion, then we'll do a roll call vote since we need two-thirds on some of the.
I move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Okay, read the roll.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Spencer.
Aye.
Spicer.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Deacon.
Great. Thank you. Presentation from staff, consultants, and invited guests. I don't think we had any signed up. Number eight, announcements by mayor, council, and staff. I believe Mr. Sanders had an announcement.
Thank you. Our annual Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan, Public Participation Window is open. This is our yearly, identify the projects and the amount of money that we intend to spend out of that program in the community for light removal and infrastructure. The meeting is going to be across the hall Wednesday, May 25th, I believe, at 4:00 p.m. The public is invited. If you can't make the meeting, if you go to the city webpage and scroll down to the bottom, where there's normally on my computer four boxes that kind of move around sometimes, but there'll be a link to the plan itself and a survey that you can take. It'll only take a few minutes, depending on how detailed you get with your responses, but we encourage folks to go ahead and take that survey. Be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions? All right, other announcements, Administration Committee, any?
Yes, our next meeting is slated for June 1st at 7:30 a.m. I believe it's across the hall.
Finance?
Yeah, our May meeting was scheduled for this Thursday morning, but it has been canceled.
Okay. Public Safety?
Yes, sir. Our Public Safety meeting will be Thursday, May 26th at 7:30 a.m. in the police training room.
And I'll give an update on public works. We did meet last Thursday. Appreciate all staff's work, it was a rather long meeting, but I think a productive meeting. We will meet again on Thursday, June the 9th. Any other announcements? Great. Takes us to number nine, presentations from the gallery on specific bills or resolutions. Again, I don't think we had anybody signed up, so we'll go to the consent agenda. We'll need a motion on that.
Move to approve?
Second.
Got a motion to approve and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Bill's introduced. Item 11, first one, 22-007.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, vacating and discontinuing the right-of-way of an unnamed alley to the rear of the properties in the 1600 block of West Main Street.
Fresh.
Thank you. As clerk indicated, this would, this ordinance would vacate the alley at the rear of the subdivision from 1912 that included an alley at the rear of the properties in the 1600 block. It's an unimproved alley, and there's, staff recommends vacation.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Great job, thank you. Item B, 2022-008, back to Mrs. Stroke.
Would you like me to read the bill? An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Article 11 paid holidays of the Personnel Policy Manual to include Juneteenth holiday and amending the FY22 budget of the appropriating funds from the Public Safety Tax Fund to the General Fund.
We'll try again.
So as everybody knows, Juneteenth was made a federal holiday last year, and this ordinance would, if passed, would add Juneteenth as an observed holiday for city employees. The cost of it for one holiday would be about $79,700.
Councilman Lester.
Yes, I am proposing to end it, the funding part, and propose that it be, the part says the Public Safety Tax Fund to be struck, and such that it just says, amending the fiscal year 2022 budget to appropriate funds from the General Fund for additional holiday. I'm proposing that because I don't think this should be funded differently from any other holiday, and I just think that's not setting a good precedent to take you from safety tax, and so that's why I'm proposing that change.
All right, we've got recommended amendment.
I'll second that.
I was second on that, so. Discussion on the amendment. Councilman Spencer.
I think it was proposed in last year's budget, and I thought that, I don't have figures in front of me, but I thought that observance, that holiday was $100,000, I thought, versus 79. I just was wondering what the difference in the numbers are.
I don't know if she has something on it, I don't know that it would be, have been done any differently, if there's just a difference in staffing levels right now due to vacancies,
So I don't have the figures in front of me that we would have had included in a budget for FY22. These calculations are based on eight hours of holiday pay, or whatever the employee handbook states is considered a holiday, and it's based on current wages and current staffing levels as of this time.
But fire department is paid on full shift, correct?
Yes, they are, they're paid 24 hours. Also, I wonder too if maybe there was not a deduction taken in the budget, in the pink sheets, for the contribution from the school district, maybe, for the school resource officers? I don't know.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Got an amendment on the table, Ms. Donaldson is going to read the amendment then, and then we'll take a roll. We've got an amendment on the table. Ms. Donaldson is going to read the amendment then, and then we'll take a roll call vote.
The bill would be amended, removing funding from the Public Safety Tax, and it would come from the General Fund.
Okay.
Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Deacon?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Excellent. Now you have the amended bill on the, the table. I, I just want to make a general comment. I thank Councilman Lester for bringing this issue to our attention. I think it's an issue that we've needed to address. I think it's very appropriate, so thanks to staff for, for working with us. Any other comments on the amended bill? Resolution, I guess. Takes us to item twenty twenty-two zero zero nine.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri approving a salary adjustment and amending the FY twenty-two budget of the city of Jefferson, Missouri by supplementally appropriating funds within the various city funds outlined in Exhibit A.
Mr. Kroll?
Thank you. Uh, this recommendation is for a five percent across-the-board salary wage increase to employees to help mitigate the adverse impacts of the economy and labor market we are currently experiencing. Essentially, I think of the adjustment as a down payment or early payment of about five months in this fiscal year, uh, as it compares to next fiscal year. I'm just suggesting that we try to get ahead of the competitive labor market. We have dedicated employees who enjoy working for the city and realize the positive difference they are making. Although employees do not want to leave the city employment, financial considerations compel some employees to explore other employment opportunities. I think we should give our employees a reason to stay, not an excuse to leave. The increase is applicable on a general basis for employees while the current analysis Evergreen is conducting. Um, I expect to be more specific, um, dealing with additional job classifications. I understand there's some discussion about excluding directors. I think it's important and appropriate to include directors. If you want to discuss pay, performance, personalities, or any misconceptions related to directors, I'm glad to do so. Um, for other subjective concerns, I don't think there, I have much that I can add in that regard. The cost of this early adjustment is approximately four hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars for the remainder of this fiscal year, or approximately one point one million dollars out of a sixty-five point one million dollar budget. I anticipate that further, um, discussions of compensation for employees will occur, um, in next year's budget as well, and glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilman Spencer?
Yeah, I'd be clear that I think we do have some, some pay disparity issues. Um, I think we're, we have a, a rising concern with our dispatchers, um, with, with, uh, some, some heavy loss there in that department. I, I just think we need to go at this more, you know, targeted approach and, uh, utilize some of this funding, uh, to really shore up certain, uh, employees, uh, within pay ranges. Um, and I think this just needs a lot of work, um, especially with, with the component of, of directors and, and those kinds of things. I don't think we're having a director necessarily issue. I think we're having issues with, with staff that have put a lot of years in with the city, and they're nowhere near their midpoint, and I mean midpoint. And, um, you know, we're bringing staff on, uh, and they're making almost as much, and in some cases, more than a lot of these folks. So I, I think we have a chance to go back to the drawing board and, and rework this proposal, and like I said, get more of a targeted approach to really help, help some folks that, that have been needing it for quite a while.
Mr. Kroll?
So this really is just an effort to try to stop the leak, um, get everything moved and, and encourage some employees to stay and let them know that we've got another component coming, which I mentioned is Evergreen. Evergreen's taking a very specific look at, um, the various positions that we have and try to make those adjustments for council's consideration. I'm not aware of anybody, there may be, but I'm just not aware of anybody that's commented higher than a midpoint. Um, and then, of course, midpoint, that, that's an easy thing to fix. You just don't move employees. But I don't think that that's something that, that, um, employees would want to do. I think they want to be able to move. We're in negotiations. We just finished the police negotiation contracts, the next item subject to your approval, and we're currently in negotiations with fire, so I think that'll address some of those. Dispatchers are absolutely a major concern. This, uh, five percent would help, um, in some of the differences that we know in salaries, um, for example, with the county.
And, and I agree with that. I, I, I think, um, we need to, to move along with the program. Like I said, I think it just needs to be more of a targeted approach, and, and I, and I'm not a, I'm not supportive of moving the bracket, either, entry or, or the, uh, top end bracket, so I think that's an ongoing cost that, that can, um, really get out of, out of control if we don't keep, uh, keep an eye on that.
Mr. Kroll?
Well, we certainly can talk about the minimums, but the, the last several, we just had a planner leave today for an increase in salary. We can't hire an accountant. They want ten to twenty thousand dollars above the minimum. Um, we've got some different people just leaving, and I don't think the, the problem is that the, 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 part of the problem is the minimum, uh, trying to recruit people, but it's also retaining employees.
Other comments? Councilmember Wiseman?
Yes, note that there's a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, um, coming out of FY twenty-two for the, from the Public Safety Tax and an annual cost of four hundred and three thousand dollars, but that's not F O P or, um, fire. What is that covering?
Well, it, it would be fire because we don't have a contract with them, and then I think, um, dispatchers, we have them put in there as well.
Isn't, isn't fire still negotiating their contract, though?
We just started negotiating their contract, yeah, so. Yeah, if you don't want to give it to fire, that, that's, that's fine, but, um.
No, I'm just curious how much.
That's, that's the reason. That, that, the portion of the public safety, um, salaries that are related to, um, police are covered under the agreement if you approve it, but fire is not yet there.
So how much of this is related to dispatchers versus fire?
Ooh, I don't know offhand. I mean, majority of it, I guess, but I don't know offhand.
Majority would be fire because this does take into account the benefits of in mind that the logger's rate on fire is quite high. Um, I can provide that information via email to the council if that's your request, but I do not have that in front of me right now.
Thank you. I would appreciate that in the next week or so. I think we have like three weeks until the next meeting, so, thank you.
Councilman Spencer?
Yeah, and, and I, I'm glad you bring that up with, with the logger situation. I, I hear that a lot, that fires or loggers' pension is, is higher than, than city employees. You don't have to pay into social security for them. They're social security exempt, so that's seven and a quarter, seven and a half percent savings to the city right there. And there's been many, many years where this body and previous mayors and previous city administrators didn't fully fund the pension plan when it was a private pension plan of the firefighters and, uh, firefighters. So, um, I, I get a little bird in my saddle when, when I hear that, that our, that the firefighter's pension is, is, um, higher. There's, there's a history there.
Any other comments? We appreciate the additional information then, and this will be back next meeting. Takes us to item D twenty twenty-two dash zero one zero.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri approving the Fraternal Order of Police Labor Agreement and amending the FY twenty-two budget of the city of Jefferson, Missouri by supplementally appropriating funds within the various funds outlined in Exhibit A.
Mr. Kroll?
We've, um, discussed this before, and this is, um, bringing to you the final contract for the Fraternal Order of Police and the city, um, salary negotiation. I would ask representatives from the F O P to come forward, take a brief minute, maybe just to walk through, uh, the plan for you, let them introduce themselves and their position.
Welcome. Thanks for being here.
Thank you very much for the opportunity. My name's Jeremy Bowman. I'm president of Jefferson City Police Officers Association. Standing to my rights, Jason Ambler, the executive vice president. As you have, we've seen before, let's get on the, the right one there. Maybe. Shouldn't. I'm just gonna get on one screen there. Need me to get to it? There you go. What this is, is this is a thirty-five step pay plan. As a police officer comes in, it may not work. You may have to refer to your sheets. I apologize. Police officer would come in at step one at forty-six thousand and then can continue to graduate steps according to a, their yearly evaluation. If they're a productive employee with the meets expectations are higher, they would continue a step. They can continue all the way through that step, maxing out at step eighteen. You can see there, right there is good. Thank you. As you get into the promotional steps, go from whatever step they are and advance two steps into the sergeant position. Continue their career, growing in the steps as a successful employee. Be promoted to lieutenant, which is a three-step advance, and then a captain is a two-step. All those numbers on the right of that through the pay plan are two point five percent increases. So your appropriate promotion from sergeant is a five percent increase. Lieutenant would be seven and a half, and then captain would be five percent. Um, it is a progressive plan that, uh, that addresses both recruitment and retention, uh, and I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you. Questions? Comments? Mr. Kroll?
I just wanted to, to mention, um, certainly in agreement with the, um, agreement as proposed, uh, one of the cautions that we have is the minimum. Um, I think we're still at forty-six, and, um, we just need to make sure we're watching that and making sure that we're still remaining competitive.
Excellent. I know you guys have spent a lot of time on this. Thank, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Forward to the next meeting. One last chance. Mr. Millman?
Yeah, um, so just a, a technical note. In, in the excitement to get this thing done, um, I've noticed that, uh, the, the language that actually adopts the agreements was somehow dropped out of the ordinance, so there will be a substitute at the next meeting adopts not only the, the, uh, the, the funding, but also officially adopts the, uh, the two agreements, uh, for the exempt and non-exempt, uh, employee groups. So that was just a technical oversight. I apologize for that. So we will have a technical, uh, substitute at the next meeting.
I think that means we have to start all over again, doesn't it?
Well, that'd be fine, too.
I'd prefer not, with all due respect.
Second act, boys.
I hear some dissent from the microphones.
All joking aside, the time commitments are the police passion for this community, so I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Well, thank you, and we will. Councilmember Ward?
Um, regarding the entry salary of forty-six, where is that, um, in comparison with our neighboring communities?
Columbia's starting salary, if you were to get on their website and look, is like forty-eight thousand, three hundred. But as Mr. Kroll has stated, uh, in prior meetings, Columbia contributes four and a half percent of their own pocket into their retirement. So if you're a thousand, three hundred minus the four and a half percent, you're around forty-six thousand, so it's comparable.
And are we, I'm sorry.
No, no, no.
And are we still offering the sign-on bonus, and if so, do you see that that will be something we will continue to move forward with as?
I believe we're still doing that. I'll, sorry, Mr. Kroll, I'll deflect to you.
That, that's correct. We are.
Just making sure where, where we need to be to be competitive.
For sure.
And that helps, too.
The, the incentive is authorized through the end of the fiscal year.
Okay, thank you.
And it's, we also have it for dispatchers, so this is a great place to work. If people are thinking about applying, come on down.
Come on in. Thank you very much.
Again, thanks for all your work on it. Appreciate it. All right, that takes us to bills pending twenty twenty-two dash zero zero four.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri establishing automatic aid agreements with four fire protection districts.
I believe that takes us to Chief Schofield.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate that. Uh, this is a, an agreement with, uh, four neighboring fire districts, and it, it, uh, covers automatic aid that would be from the time of dispatch of a call, uh, both organizations would respond, and that, that goes both ways. Uh, that goes us responding into a very limited, um, part of their, our boundaries, and them coming into the city, um, to help us out when we have structure fires. There is a fairly limited scope with this, and so we, we've kept it pretty, uh, pretty defined and, and, and limited to just structure fires. It's not all calls for service. It is only for structure fires, and it is only one unit each way. So a staffed apparatus, uh, depending on, on the jurisdiction, uh, could be a ladder truck, could be an, an engine company or a tanker, but it'd be a staffed apparatus, uh, that would come with personnel. And, uh, it would kind of cover some of those critical gaps that we have on a, uh, on a structure fire. As you probably know, a structure fire, as you can imagine, would be a very, um, personnel-intensive, um, operation, requiring a lot of people to do a lot of things in a very short time. So this, this allows us to cover some gaps, uh, some short-term gaps that we might have when we are, uh, fighting a fire or multiple fires at one time. Really, the, the, uh, the concept kind of came about when we were, uh, talking about some of the aftermath of the, the tornado, um, in, uh, May of twenty nineteen. And since that time, we've, we've explored this option, and what really works the best for us is that we have the same agreement with all four organizations. It's already been approved by those organizations and their governing boards, and, uh, it allows for every square inch of the city to be covered by one of those four organizations as well. So we have some consistency, some predictability. It gives us the ability also to, uh, to train with these organizations, to deconflict, uh, differences in equipment, policies, procedures, those kind of things. So, uh, the net effect is that the, uh, the fire service in our community is stronger. So I'm happy to answer any questions that I could for, for anybody.
I know the chair was very active in that. Any comments?
Well, I know that they worked, uh, long and hard to get this agreement, and with the, the tremendous improvements over the years, we've always had good cooperation, but with the improvements in equipment and manpower with the county and everything, this will be a, an added, a great benefit to both the city and the county, so it's, it's a good thing.
I've heard very positive comments in the community. Councilman Lester?
So just wondering, after, after this goes for a year, uh, uh, will someone come back and update and tell us how it's worked?
I think, uh, one of the, the benefits to doing it this way is that we're able to track it a little bit better, and we're able to have some real data from real incidents, and we're able to discuss and refine that. And that is probably the hallmark of the fire service. I would say we're constantly analyzing what we do and trying to find ways to do it better. And I know that I can speak for all the, the chiefs and, and, uh, organizations that we're working with. They also want to refine the process, uh, and, and make some of those improvements. So I think it'll give us the ability to, to give you some of that information, some of the, uh, some of the benefits, and then also some of the challenges.
Any other comments? You have twenty twenty-two dash zero zero four in front of you. We'll need a motion to move it forward.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other comments? Roll call.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Deacon?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Thank you for all your work on that. We've already taken care of twenty twenty-two dash zero zero five, so that takes us to twenty twenty-two dash zero zero six.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Craft and Toll for the Capital Area Active Transportation Plan formerly known as the Capital Area Pedestrian and Bicycle Plan.
Mr. Sanders?
Thank you. Uh, the Capital Area Metropolitan, uh, Planning Organization is the long-range transportation planning group, uh, multi-jurisdictional for the Jefferson City urbanized area. Uh, it is funded eighty percent. Uh, they are responsible for the long-range transportation planning in the area. Uh, a couple of years ago, we finished up our, uh, uh, five-year plan, uh, focusing mostly on motorized transportation, and now it's time to update our, uh, pedestrian bicycle plan. Uh, part of that activity, as, as we were moving forward and discussing, uh, how we're going to carry that out, um, it, it became, uh, aware to us that we also have a sidewalk plan and a greenway plan that, that both needed updating, too. So, so the purpose of this plan is to do one overall active transportation, biking, walking, transit's in there, too, scooters, um, uh, whatnot. And, um, so we hope this one plan. we hope this one plan gives us a, an overall view of the situation regarding those modes of transportation. So, the, the MPO using federal funds and, and a match by Parks and Recreation put together a, a selection committee that went through. We did a call for qualifications, went out to almost 1,600 companies. We went through the process and evaluated them all, and they selected Craft and Toll. The, the consultants sort of fell into two groups. One from large urban areas that had the skills, but they focused, we felt, on large urban areas. And then, on the other hand, we had some smaller consulting firms, some here in town, too, that do really good at transportation engineering, more actually on the road level. What we liked about Craft and Toll is they were a large organization. They've done work for large communities, but also smaller, more rural communities that probably reflect Jefferson City better than perhaps St. Louis or Kansas City. So, we actually did give a lot of thought. We also looked at the technical abilities and whatnot like that. So, with that, the, the Campbell Board of Directors is, is forwarding to the city council a recommendation to approve a contract with Craft and Toll, 80% funded from federal funds and 20% through Parks, Recreation, Forestry Funds. Be glad to answer any questions. Ms. Williams is here to assist me with the difficult ones.
Thank you. Any questions? You have 22, 2022-006 in front of you then.
Move to approve.
Second, sir. Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer? Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Deacon?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Thank you. Takes us to the informal calendar, 2022-003. My intention is to leave this on the informal calendar. We had a fairly lengthy discussion at the Public Works Committee last Thursday, and I appreciate all the work that went in. You know, staff, as you know, had raised this issue, I guess, a year and a half or so ago, when we were talking about sales tax age. We kind of revived it from the committee level, so staff complied and submitted some numbers to us. And I think our concern was that the costs have ballooned significantly. We're up looking at about $1 million on this project, and we're trying to look at other opportunities, which obviously would not be building the bridge, at least what I'm hearing. So, my intention is to leave, leave this on the informal calendar unless there's interest from other members of council to try to revive it. I just, I personally, and I can only speak for, for myself, don't feel comfortable investing $1 million in that area with somewhat lukewarm response from individuals that we thought might be interested in it. But, you know, certainly any other member of council that wants to revive that, we can talk about it for the next committee meeting, or next council meeting. Anyways, we will leave that on the informal then, and I just wanted to give you some background on it. Takes us to number 14, Resolutions, Resolution 2022-04.
A resolution authorizing the City of Jefferson to apply for the Bureau of Justice Assistance's Body-Worn Camera Policy and Implementation Program grant.
I believe this, Captain Wilton.
Thank you. Yes, as stated, this resolution would allow the Jeff City Police Department to apply for the Bureau of Justice Assistance's Body-Worn Camera Policy and Implementation Program grant. Our overall plan, as far as body-worn cameras right now, is to implement 90 body-worn cameras. That entire project, all told, is around $661,643. The eligible funding, if we were to receive this grant, is up to $2,000 per body-worn camera, which would amount to $180,000. So, if awarded, we would be able to apply that $180,000 towards the overall cost of this project. Right now, as it stands, just the body-worn cameras alone cost around $192,000, so we wouldn't even be completely fulfilling the cost of the body-worn cameras themselves, but it would sure be a positive move forward if we were to be awarded this grant.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Councilman Spencer?
Do you have a, an anticipation of when that grant might be rewarded?
They have not listed, but the grant application itself is due on May 25th, so it's here in the next week or so, so we're right on top of the deadline for that.
Thank you.
Councilman Deacon?
I'm just curious, is the expense on the storage, I assume that data has to be stored forever, because you know we're a litigious society, Ms. Wiseman, but I assume that cost goes up every year, is...
That $660,000 roughly is over a five-year time period. At that point, we would have to look at where we're at with the cameras and the storage, so we're estimating that we can cover that first five years with $660,000. We are planning to implement also, as part of that plan, in-car camera capabilities. We have them now, but they're at the end of life, so we need to replace those as well. So, we're looking at this as one huge combined project, so that we can use the same type of camera with the same software on the backend to store and, and store data and store evidence.
Councilman Lester?
Yes, I noticed with the screening survey, it had a number of questions I wanted to ask about. One of them was about requiring a comprehensive body-worn camera policy developed with partnership with key stakeholders, and just was wondering, you comment on, on that process? Has this been done, and if hadn't, what's, what's planned?
I'm sorry. It, it does not have to be done, completed by the time the application is submitted, submitted. But if awarded, we would be working with a provider from the Bureau of Justice Assistance, and they would walk us through every step of the implementation program. So, not just policy development, but also the requirement to have community stakeholder events. Now, we plan to do that whether we have the policy or the, the grant in hand or not, but they would walk us through that entire process to make sure that best practices are observed and help us through that entire program.
Okay, I take it. That's, that's the same for the management plan?
Yep. We have an entire, it's about a four-page checklist of everything that we've got to, to check off to, to meet the requirements of the grant, and we've got to be able to prove that on the backend that we have complied with their standards for implementing that program to receive the money.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? I just wanted to add, I, I appreciate the work you've done on this. I know there were community groups that have been very active, and I know the chairman, and worked with public safety and worked with you to take their concerns into practice, and you guys have been very responsive to keep them up to speed, so.
Thank you. Yeah, and, and those community events that we're talking about, the stakeholder engagement, we are in a short suspense for the, the grant itself, but I've already reached out to a few of those groups to set up those events, so that we can get input from the community. So, I've had a really good reception, and we plan on having something, the first event in about a month, once we get a date established. So, those wheels are turning. It's just that we have to have the resolution to apply, and then we will walk through the steps of, of the entire implementation program, as opposed to just buying body cameras and, and, and taking our best, best stab at it.
Excellent. We have Resolution 2022-04 in front of you.
Move to approve.
Got a motion and a second. Seen no other comments? Roll call vote.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Deacon?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
And again, thanks for all the work on it and looking at funding opportunities. Resolution 2022-05.
A resolution authorizing an agreement with Gallagher Benefit Incorporated for employee benefits broker services.
Ms. Strope?
Thank you. So, the city recently distributed a request for proposals for employee benefit broker services and received four responses. We had a committee, including Sarah Trittler, Sheila Perry, David Bangy, Jay Coley, and J.J. Gates, who reviewed the proposals and selected three companies to interview with. After the interviews, two companies were then asked to submit a best and final offer, focusing on their ability to assist with high-dollar claims and pharmacy solutions. Gallagher Benefit Services was unanimously selected by the committee. Gallagher's dedicated public entity resources and services, their exclusive pharmacy solutions, their cost containment strategies and design, their proprietary reporting, analytics, and benchmarking services, and their actuarial support put them on the top. Direct cost to the city is $30,000 per year, and Kristen Wood, benefits consultant, and Rachel Reiki, who's the area president with Gallagher, are here this evening if you have any questions. And in addition, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Excellent. Thank you. Questions? Councilman Spencer?
Where's this firm located? What's their home?
Well, Gallagher is a nationwide company. The two ladies that are here this evening are out of St. Louis.
Other questions, comments, and a resolution in front of you?
I move to approve.
Second, sir. You got a motion and a second? All right, we'll do a roll call vote.
Spencer?
No.
Spicer?
No.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
No.
Deacon?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
No.
Hensley?
No.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
No.
Five eyes. Bill fails. I'm sorry, four eyes.
So, the bill fails. All right. Next item is Resolution 2022-06.
A resolution supporting the County Commission's submission of an application to the Missouri Development Finance Board's Tax Credit for Contribution Program.
Mr. Melman?
Thank you. So, this resolution lends the city council's support to the application of Cole County on behalf of United Capital Soccer Club, 501(c)(3) Tactics and Corporation for inclusion in the Missouri Development Finance Board's Tax Credit for Contribution Program. Tax Credit for Contribution Program essentially grants people tax credits for contributions to, to projects that are accepted within the program. So, this is Cole County making the application to the MDFB. This resolution would provide the city's support, and we believe that the inclusion of city support in this application would make it more likely for the MDFB to approve the soccer projects' inclusion in this valuable program. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions or comments? All right, we have item 2022-06 in front of us.
I move to approve.
All right, got a motion and a second. Seen no other comment? Do a roll call.
Spicer?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Deacon?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Excellent. Thank you. Takes us to item 15, Presentations from the Gallery and Other Topics. I don't see any. Item 16, Council and Staff Discussion on Presentation Topics. Item 17, Any New Business? Councilman Spencer?
Yes. Ms. Strope, could, just some questions on our self-insured program. What is our individual stop-loss?
It is $250,000, I believe.
$250,000. And our aggregate number?
That's a very large number. I don't know offhand. Sorry.
That's okay. Just was wondering if I could get some, some reports on that.
I'm, I'm sorry, you're talking health insurance, not work comp?
Correct.
Okay, because they're different. Okay.
Yeah. Like a lag report, utilization report, stop-loss report, if I can get those, please.
A lag report, a stop-loss report, and-
And utilization report, please. Thank you.
Anything else, Councilman?
If, if I could get that aggregate number as well, we'd appreciate. Thank you.
Anything else under new business? All right, that takes us to item 18. We need them to approve the closed session minutes from last meeting. Got a motion?
Second.
Second. All right, do a roll call vote.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Do I have to abstain since I wasn't here?
You don't have to, but generally, that's common practice.
That's what I'm gonna do.
Deacon?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Excellent. Any unfinished business? Councilwoman Wiseman, you're up for the final motion of the evening.
I move to adjourn, please.
All in favor? Thank you.